...States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come to you today with thankful hearts. We thank you for our country. We thank you that we live in a country where we have so many freedoms. We have the right to express ourselves and express our opinions and our thoughts. We thank you for our county commissioners and we ask you to be with them today and to be with all those in attendance. There's a controversial matter on the agenda today and Lord, we would ask that you be in charge of this meeting. May all of us treat each other with dignity and respect and love and be with the commissioners and help them to make their decisions with integrity, with wisdom, with discernment. We have to support Jesus' name.
Okay, next up is the approval of ordinance from April, excuse me, May 28th, County eighteen meeting, and I have a motion at this time. Have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor of approvals presented, say aye. Next up is the approval of claims.
Thank you. I have the council payable claim docket in an amount of $2,225,522.37. And then I also have the payroll docket for June 7th in an amount of $364,354.21.
At this time I entertain a motion to approve the claims you presented.
So moved.
One second. Have a motion in a second, any questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the claims you presented, say aye. All opposed? What else would be on there?
Um, BSRI thing, which is a little bit later on the agenda, and then I have the cover bridge certification, where you basically, it doesn't require an O, just a commissioner signature, but we get money from the state for the cover bridge that we have up there at Darlington. So, right. So I'm passing that along to you.
Anything from any department head or elected officials present? Just don't wait your hand high, camera's gonna see right in the eye. Nothing under old business. New business, under A, and that's orders two nineteen fourteen Montgomery County zoning ordinance, and I'll turn it over again.
This ordinance comes to you as a result of a favorable recommendation by the planning commission. The planning commission put it for, I thought, three, to make a favorable recommendation on the proposed zoning ordinance, the certification is there with four, wire. This ordinance would approve the zoning ordinance making the proper findings and provide for the reporting of that and publication of adoptions for our grant. This is first reading, but you may adopt another first reading if you...
At this time I enter, at this time I enter can a motion for twenty nineteen fourteen?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
This has been a long process. We've been honestly working on this for two years, I guess. When I came in as a commissioner, I just believed, from talking to other communities that are prospering and moving forward, that what we lacked that they had was a vision and a plan. This community has avoided that discussion because of exactly what we're talking about here today. This zoning, zoning has been used as a fear, a tool, fear to stop progress in Montgomery County, online. It's fine if you don't want Montgomery County to grow, I understand. So we have what you want, but we need more people here. You know, there's too many of our young folks that move away for opportunity. For us not to take advantage of what we have here in this community, to keep our kids here, to think that we don't have those opportunities, when you look at our neighbors to the north, twelve miles, a hundred and ninety thousand people, twelve miles to the east of Montgomery County, eighty thousand people, and Hendrickson County's twelve miles to southeast, a hundred and sixty thousand people. We've been thirty-seven or eight thousand people for twenty-five years. We have not been a open door or welcoming community. You see no, no everything signs, all, who must be a part of that? Honestly, you know? If your goal is to keep your cornfields, cornfields and be happy where you're at, that's been, that's been a good strategy. Honestly, today, that's not the strategy because the cost of services provided for the community as it is today continue to go up. Every one of us had the biggest tax increase we've ever had in the county council because the cost of services are going up, but we're not growing our economy. So it tells me if we want to continue to have the services we have, we're gonna have to grow our economy. We cannot continue to tax our people. That is not the majority thought today at the county council. They have not been willing to invest in the future, the majority. I hope now, as we've gone through this process the last couple of years, that they have better understanding of why, why, why do you invest in growing this economy, this community? Or we have to start cutting services and then the economies, and the people start moving out because they don't, they're not gonna live here without service. Saying all that, the people have spoken, we spent a year in the comprehensive plan process. I've been criticized by the lack of participation, supposed lack of participation in the comprehensive plan. People throw out numbers, twelve hundred, ten hundred, I don't know. Those are the ones that you might be able to count, but that, the steering committee alone, the twenty-six people, were hand chosen because of their spirit of influence, different geography of this community, different backgrounds, ag, business, retail. That spirit of influence is well greater than the twenty-six people on this steering It is a representative sample. Anybody that knows anything about professional polling knows there's a number that's a representative sample of the community. If you added one more person to that process, one hundred more people, a thousand more people, the results would not change because it is a representative sample. The people, overwhelming majority of these people want this community to prosper and move forward. There are, there are percentages of people that don't. I get that, and they're, they're in this room, a lot of them, but they're not the majority. They're vocal, very vocal, and I applaud them for their passion. I'm not saying that it's a bad thing to have that view. I just know that with this community forward, we have to take, do something different than what all this does, and continue to get what we got. This zoning order, this ties exactly into what the comprehensive plan is and exactly what the people say. The biggest controversy here is Steve Redd, one side's blue and the other is windows, you know? Overwhelming majority of the people in this community do not want wind energy today. They did not say they don't want green energy, back then they said they want green energy, environmentally friendly energy. But to think Montgomery County's not doing that, or doing our part, we have seven solar farms either in or going into construction today, that built good at the end of the day, and nearly half of the profits of those power will be provided, supplied by the solar energy. So to think that we're not doing our part of green energy is, is not an act of safety either. People just don't want wind energy today. If you read this ordinance, there is a pathway for wind energy. If, if the seven months community changes over time and the people decide, hey, we missed an opportunity, there's a pathway for the, for wind energy to come before the board's zoning appeals and ask for variance. People will be contacted that are directly affected by that industry and have a say. That's what should have happened all along, but because we did not have any ordinances, here's a wild west, it's a free throw. And now you've got to divide it, not even divide a room, but you've got to divide a community. You've got neighbors against neighbors and friends against friends and because we have not had a process, an orderly process, that people can understand what's going on and have a voice in this, in including that process, you're gonna have just what you got, you're gonna have a divided community. These are too many good people in this community to continue to, you know, I've said all along, I said, you know, today it's wind, you want me to fix wind today with no tools? And what's tomorrow? Well, tomorrow's hog farms. You know, tomorrow's here, it's hog. Now people want me to stop hog farm, you know? It's just another example of not having an orderly process, a community can be involved in, can understand what's going on, be informed and have some input into decision. That's all this ordinance does, is give you input into the process. Initially, what we've written up here is, is obviously the first step is adopting the ordinance, and then, and there is a chapter on no wind. And it does regulate wind to a point where it's gonna be awful hard for the limited few people to make the business decision to come here. And I will, I will tell you, I'm sure everyone is sick of hearing the radio ads, you know? I had the guy tell me one time, you really, you learn a lot about somebody when they're winning, you learn the hell out of a lot about somebody when they're losing, you know? Is that, is that a partner that we want in this community, honestly? You know, I mean, that just disappoints me to know when, to, to think that, that a company like that wants to be in a community and has the force, it's way in and in those kind of circumstances. But anyway, that's, that's a little personal, not relevant, but it's, that's just my opinion on that. Anyway, this, this affects the wind energy, but that's exactly what the comprehensive plan says. Eighty percent of the people that participate in the comprehensive plan do not want wind energy in Montgomery County today, today. And that's what we're doing, simple as that. Anyway, Tom Baller and I wanted to, thanks, Hugh.
Okay, anything else? Okay, at this time we're gonna open it up to the audience for comment. There's over a few rules. I know some of you might have forgot since the last time you got up here to spoke, and I know many of you have been up here. There'll be a three minute time limit. Come to the podium, you state your name, your address, and then you're free to make your comment you have about the ordinance two twenty nineteen dash fourteen, Montgomery County zoning ordinance. So at this time, if anybody has anything, welcome to step to the podium.
I'm Karen Heckey, although I want to wait on your hand, you're a conference speaker. Good morning, thank you for allowing us to speak. Up until now, this zoning debate has been all about wind energy. Say it's about zoning all you want, but that's, this all started with the threat of a lawsuit. Here we are seven months later and still no lawsuit has been filed, so why the big rush? In my line of work, rushing things can cause you to miss an important step, which can be catastrophic. At a hearing a few weeks ago, another concerned citizen asked a question. Now it's wind farms, what is next? Large feeding operations, waste transfer stations, plant fields? We didn't realize this would become an issue so soon. As you're probably aware, last week, a local farmer filed an application for a hog feeding operation. And I'd like to point out that CAPOS are one of the nine things in the comprehensive plan that the county imposes for development. And it is one of those eight things that is not addressed by this ordinance. So if you pass this ordinance as a trick, you're giving the residents that oppose it, there's very few options to fight. This may not be as big an issue as wind, but there are already a list of people that oppose this site, and as it just came out last week, I'm sure that number will grow. You say you want to follow the comprehensive plan, the will of the people, well, people oppose CAPOS as well. And you owe it to the citizens of the community to be consistent with what you've said so far, to take a second look at this ordinance and to write. You may say, you say you want to do what the people want. We've been at this for several months, I'm no attorney, but surely if the coup was going to see, it would have been filed by now. How about we table this ordinance so we can make the necessary changes to address all nine of these issues, not just one? And you want to follow the will of the people? There's no better way to find the will of the people than election. Why not show the community you're willing to work with them? You gave them the opportunity, you gave the community a voice in the planning process, why not give them a voice in the zoning process as well? In the twenty eighteen election, we had a fifty percent voter turnout, if I remember correctly. Fifty percent is a much larger sample size than one percent. You say this is what the people want. If you truly believe that, then you have nothing to lose by putting it on ballot. Thank you.
All right, I'll address that. I did some of that when I started, when I made my comments, but as far as that lawsuit goes, we cannot talk about a lawsuit in public. That, that, just, can't, I don't want any more than that. We did not, that is not something we just made up and said, oh, there's a threat of lawsuit, so. As far as the hog farms go, I, I had a, I'm just gonna read you a response that I sent to a citizen in London that asked a bunch of questions and then made those simple accusations, honestly. And I responded, I said, you know, I suggest that the folks look to IDAN's regulations for confined feeding operations. I've got the link to that. Our county has sixteen CAPOS qualified livestock operations existing today. That means over six hundred head hogs per unit, three hundred cattle, and thirty thousand poultry. We have three new hog units going through IDAN's approval process now. Livestock is not new to our community. Yes, I do support animal agriculture in our county. You compare this stance to my stance on wind energy ordinance, that could not be more interactive, a more inaccurate comparison. Apples to oranges. Wind energy is not currently part of our community. The overwhelming majority of this community do not want wind energy in our county today. The chapter attached to the zoning ordinance that controls wind energy is a direct reflection of the will of the people, no wind today, nothing to do with my opinion. Yes, in our code, there is a pathway for wind energy down the road, settlement of our community changes, this appeal process for every landowner directly affected by the industry will be notified, come to your business, have a chance to explain exactly where it's suggested to do business. If we are able, if we are, if we are to include a chapter in our zoning code to address animal agriculture, which we will, it will only add a layer of community involvement in the process, a livestock producer will have to call before willing to union. That involvement is non-existent today because we have no zoning. I would suggest looking at Hendrick County's ordinance on animal agriculture. I personally believe that code is something very similar, it's a good thing in our county as well, but in the end, the state ultimately controls livestock operations inside. Another point, though, animal agriculture is a high assessed value, low use of county services industry. There's no special road improvements have to be made, overall animal agriculture is not a drain on services by any stretch. You talk about a referendum on planning and zoning, I, I'll just let Dan Taylor explain, but that's not, you know, your referendum, your referendum is your, is the election process we have. Three of us, seven councilmen, that's, that's your referendum. We are doing what the majority of the people in this community want. If you want to change that, change us. That's it, that's it. Yeah, it is, that's your process.
Anybody else have a comment? I will say, well, he's coming up, guys, there's plenty of seats in the middle here, that people can move over, slide in if you guys in the back wanna have a seat. You're welcome to come on to the corner.
I'm James Willis, forty-seven fifty-seven, north, three sixty, east, Crawfordville. And I do appreciate the fact that we have twelve of the wind farms in this. And I do appreciate the fact that you are trying with the planning. Now, the zoning part has to be concerned, and has always had to be concerned. You can grow a community without zoning, you can plant a community without zoning. It can be done. I have been in communities, and lived in communities that have zoning. And it has become a rather difficult process to get anything done. Now, you say you can't bring in industry, you can't bring in this or that, eh, not quite accurate, because you can't. Companies can come in without zoning, they don't require. Did Nucor come in? Yes. Do we have zoning? No. How many other industries have come into this community without zoning? Now, a lot of it is, have you been proactive in searching out these companies that want to come in? Bring jobs to our, bring things to our community to keep young people here, keep middle-aged people here, keep older people here? No. I have not seen anything proactive on the county level, city level, anywhere. Now, for zoning, yeah, you want to come in with zoning and tell me what I can do with that. I have a problem with that, quite frankly, because that means every time I do anything, it's called jumping through hoops. Not happy with that idea. I have a business here in Crawfordville. I have to jump through hoops every time I wanted to do something. Not gonna happen on my farm. Now, planning, I'm all for. You can plan to your heart's content, but when it comes to zoning, that's a whole different situation. Now, you think long and hard before doing the zoning part of that planning. Be proactive with your planning. Search out what can come in, 'cause it's wide open. Why do you think we've been, that we've known zoning for so long? It's not because we don't want to change. Heck, we brought in new work, we brought in a lot of others, but it's not because we want to be backward or keep the community small, it's because we've not been proactive.
You've titled up, sir, thank you.
All right, okay, first thing to start off, thanks for stopping wind, I just, you know, you can't have it both ways, people, you know? You can tell them no zoning, but you just don't, thanks for stopping wind. So, and now it's hog farms, you know? There are only four counties, just a handful of counties in the state of Indiana that do not have planning and zoning. Are we the, really, once, are we, are we, are we the example that everybody should follow?
Yes.
Really? Our, our community's been thirty-seven thousand people for twenty-five years? That's the example? If we want, the people, the people said they want our community to grow and prosper. They didn't say they wanted to become, they said they wanted it to grow and prosper in an orderly fashion. Residential, that means growing our population. Residential developers are not coming to our community without some protections. They're not gonna come build if they know that there could be a hog, hog farm come right next to them. They're not gonna do it. They're not gonna invest in being inspected. You know, as you start going through this process, you realize our opportunity is to grow our population base here. Gosh, if we're putting a plan together that's gonna bring people here, let's thank this some developers and have them help us, and have them help us put this plan together that's gonna want them to come here. They wouldn't even talk to you. I said, just, just come help us put, no. No, tell you, you have some kind of protection, we're not even gonna talk to you about this. So don't think that business and industry are just gonna pop in here without some protection. They are not gonna do it. There's a reason we're, where we're at today. That's all I got about that.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Good morning, my name's Michael Howell, forty nineteen, West US Highway one thirty-six. I, like the majority of the people in Montgomery County, do not feel industrial wind turbines are compatible with this vibrant community. Residential property values are adversely affected by industrial wind turbines. Value losses have been measured up to two miles from the nearest turbine. Value loss varies from a conservative figure of twenty percent all the way up to fifty percent, in extreme cases even more. Shadowed flitter cast down on acres of land can cause nausea and migraines. The audible sound from wind turbines is bad enough, however, much of the harmful sound emitted from industrial wind turbines is infrasound, which is an audible. Critical scientific studies indicate infrasound does affect on health. Infrasound is proven to cause stress in humans and a cumulative effect of stress eventually in an accident. Some say the negative health effects of winter wind syndrome are unfounded. The negative health effects of tobacco, asbestos, and aging orange were not known or were covered up for decades. It used to be lacable to suggest those things were gonna happen out there. I believe winter wind syndrome is similar, it may not affect everyone that lives near one, and it doesn't always make people sick immediately, but the long-term effects have yet to be seen. I believe there's enough information from the World Health Organization and enough people already affected in the short term that proves winter wind syndrome is a serious concern. There are far too many other concerns with wind turbines to mention. Some people with pride belief to be ulterior motives keep saying that we need to slow down on the zoning ordinance. I would like to point out that back in eighteen sixteen, the original constitution for the state of Indiana was written in nineteen days. Much of that time stopped working in less than ideal conditions. The original constitution served the state of Indiana for over thirty years. Rapid social changes dictated our current state constitution being written in eighteen fifty-one. That process took only three months. This isn't the first zoning ordinance in the world. It is only a fifty-three page document, my long, 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 longer than that. Nothing enters groundbreaking, the foundation of all is proven, if amended is needed in the future, continue to follow the will of the people. I fail to see what's being rushed. Today, I ask you to do what it takes to protect Montgomery County from industrial wind turbines. Our future depends on you. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I wanna address a little bit of that, the health issues there, that, you know, like, to think that we have not done our research on, on this is, we've done nothing, but this is a huge issue. Twenty years from now, we might be able to prove that infrasound affects what? I don't know. But today, the wind energy folks are following the letter of the law. So to regulate wind on, on, on issues that, that, there's science both ways, science, it is not the right approach. What has been affecting men in regulating wind energy are setbacks, and they are absolutely a part of zoning.
Anybody else?
Aaron Baker with Apex Clean Energy. I think it comes as, no surprise that we are very disappointed by how this process has played out in the community. Apex has been working in good faith with the county commissioners, landowners, businesses, and many others to advance this project for years. And now at the eleventh hour, you're changing the rules and pulling the rug out from under us. No matter how you feel about this project, it would be more for anyone to deny that we have been treated unfairly and that you are sending out a strong anti-business message to the world. One thing that seems to continually get lost in the wind discussion is the overall One thing that seems to continually get lost in the wind discussion is the overwhelming financial benefit that would be given to all of Montgomery County, not just a select few. Thirty-nine million dollars in property taxes, five million in economic development payments, and that's just in the first three years. And a hundred million dollars to struggling farmers. This is, it's not monopoly money that I'm talking about, those are real figures. And this is in addition to jobs, road improvements, et cetera. And in return for this, we have asked for nothing, not a tax abatement, not special treatment, or additional infrastructure, nothing other than to be treated like a legitimate business adding value to your community. It is shocking to me that a handful of officials who are supposedly so interested in growing and remark today about needing to be a welcoming community, and are being so helpful here about turning away a multimillion dollar gain from a legitimate business, particularly considering Nucor took their business elsewhere, their expansion elsewhere earlier this year, and that wasn't due to a lack of zoning. I'm wondering what businesses are beating down the door to replace the lost and hunger farm project? Maybe the two CAPOS that are currently being proposed. If you approve this ordinance, it would be killing this project and all projects in Montgomery County, all wind projects moving forward, effectively taking a hundred and two million dollars to local private property owners and close to fifty million out of the local economy. While some members of the planning commission stated that all wind is due to cost variance, you mentioned the variance process today. A simple reading of the code shows that this is obviously not possible and not the case. The variance is, we would see, we do not, we would have to see, do not meet the established legal standard for variances in Indiana. So this ordinance as drafted would not allow us to legally seek an ordinance, or seek a permit by the ordinance. We don't know if this fact is fully understood by all members of the planning commission, but regardless, by passing this ordinance, no new energy projects can be developed in rural areas, period. It's discouraging that numerous state and federal agencies have granted necessary project approvals for roaming by some land, including approvals from the governor-appointed Indiana Regulatory Commission. Yet we're unable to move forward at the local level simply due to misinformation and emotions winning the day rather than good business practices. You haven't just closed the door on wind energy, but you're closing the door in progress for this county, which is the exact opposite of what you're claiming you want to do through zoning. This move signals that Montgomery County is in fact not open for business and is a cautionary tale of how businesses can expect to be treated. Thank you.
Oh, okay, talk about good faith. You know, one of your representatives came out to the farm here last week and, and, and I had a good opportunity to have a face-to-face with him about, when they, Apex in general's approach to good faith and what they've, what they've, how they've attacked people, elected officials and that. And he said, you know, it's just business. It's just business, you know? He's from North Carolina, he doesn't live here. In fact, he's a nice guy, and I told him, I said, you're a nice guy, all the people he got working here are nice, nice folks, really nice, but I like them, all of them. But they're not the ones that are gonna be here again either.